Today's topic will be on time pass, batna and ages to come. God has given us this Bible and the Bible from Genesis chapter one to Revelation twenty-two verse twenty-one, it's all full truth, it's about the promises and blessing from God. And it's all, not only for us, but some part is for Israel and some part is for us, for the body of Christ. And because we don't know which part is for us and which part is for Israel, we get confused. As later on to divide and to go to the right path, Jesus sent for us Paul, Apostle Paul. And through his thirteen letters, we come to know where we stand. And in these thirteen letters, it is called batna. Apostle Paul has given us the scripture, it's very important. And each and every person, body of Christ, has to make it by heart. 2 Timothy two fifteen, I and my daughter has given a tune for that. We will sing and give glory for the Lord Jesus Christ. Study to shew thyself, study, study to shew thyself. Study, study to shew thyself, a proven to God, a workman that needed not to be ashamed. Rightly dividing the word of truth. 2 Timothy two fifteen. Hallelujah. This is a...
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah, this is a song for the glory of God.
Beautiful.
And we have just formed it for the body of Christ, for the glory of God. Paul has given us and taught us how to rightly divide the word. Sister, can you read for me, anybody? Ephesians, chapter two, verse eleven and twelve.
So remember that you once Gentiles in the flesh, who are called unsuccest by what is called the circumcision made in the flesh by hand, that at that time you were without Christ, being in line from the commonwealth of Israel and strangers from the covenant of promise, having no hope and without God in the world.
Yes.
Amen.
Amen. In the time pass, that means in Genesis to Acts, there was no part for the Gentiles. And we were, there was no hope only, God was not speaking to us. Four thousand years, God was not speaking to us, he was only speaking to the people of Israel. And there was no part only for us, from Genesis to Acts. It is because it said at time, time pass, we don't know, God never spoke to us. And we were just like, no hope only in us, there was no hope. I'll just give one example of a birthday party, when we go for birthday. We have a cake in front of us and the party person, the birthday person will cut the cake in the middle. Is it right? We cut the cake in the middle and divide it and equal parts we give to our friends, our family. These are the some people who know about the body of Christ, the thirteen apostle will divide it rightly and give it to his or other body of Christ who are there gathered over that birthday. But others who don't know the word properly, they will cut wherever, whichever part. It is how the preachers do these days. They take the Israel's promises and mix in the body of Christ and they confuse the Bible. And they confuse the whole word of God, which is so sweet, which is so good and it is so easy for us. The thirteen letters are so easy. But because this whole Bible is all truth, nothing wrong is there in it, everything is good. But that time, that audience which were there were Israel, the other people, not we, we must know that. Because in Genesis chapter one till Genesis chapter eleven, there were only one language and one speech. And that time all Gentiles, that time Gentiles, not we, they were all one. But in Genesis, chapter twelve, Abram came. Abram came and then God promised him, saying, I will bless you with a land and I will make you a great nation. Okay? I hope you all are understanding what I mean. I just want to explain about this, how we came in this part. Till now we are under the law and we don't know because this is all mix. Because the preachers always, I said yesterday also in Deuteronomy twenty-eight and twenty-seven, twenty-eight is all the blessing, one, two, fourteen, all blessings are there. And we always used to confess and mine, that chapter is very favorite for me because I used to say, God is blessing my going out, coming in, all these things. God is making me the head and not the tail, which was given for the Israel people. And later, if they don't obey the word, God said, I will punish you, I will curse you. That is not for us, that way we were getting confused. Why the Bible is saying, first the Bible is telling us that he will bless us. Now he is saying, God is, God will curse us. That fear used to come, why the Bible is speaking like that? The word is all, everything is good, but it is mix and we don't know what belongs to whom and where it comes to. And in Genesis, chapter twelve, verse one, God promised Abram that he will bless him with the land and make him a great nation. Later on, in Genesis, chapter seventeen, three to twelve, God made a covenant with Abram. And there where he changed his name into Abram into Abraham, okay? Genesis, chapter seventeen, verse three to twelve. There where God makes a covenant with Abraham, saying, you will make a nation of Abraham and from their nations and kings will come. And from there circumcision and unsuccestion and the middle wall appeared. Partition became circumcision and unsuccestion, started from Genesis, chapter seventeen, verse three to twelve. Okay? Still we are in that only. Genesis to the fire and the four gospel, the death of Christ is written. First chapter of Acts, the fall of Israel, the dispensation of grace, the rapture, the tribulation period, the second coming of Christ, the millennium reign of Christ. Everything is there in this three parts and I will make this three parts. Now I said in Genesis to Acts, it's time pass, means we were not there in this part. Malachi to Matthew, four hundred years, God was just silent. There was no, means God was not talking to anybody, four hundred years. And then that silent was broken by sending John the Baptist, the voice crying in the wilderness, prepare ye the way of the Lord. John the Baptist started preaching about Jesus, that he is coming. Many people, means many preachers teach about this four gospel and they say it is for the body of Christ. That also was not for the body of Christ. And it was for the Israel, because the people, when Jesus came, he came because this promises which was given for Abraham, it was not fulfilled because people never listened to the prophets who were sent before. And then Jesus has to come. And he came for the Israel people, circumcised people, not for the unsuccest. Romans, chapter four, verse three. We'll see what the scriptures says and tells us.
What does the scripture say?
Means Romans four, three says, what the scripture says. Only the scriptures can correct us because 2 Timothy three sixteen says. All the scriptures, if you can read, read sister. 2 Timothy three sixteen.
All scriptures, scripture is given by inspiration of God and is profitable for doctrine, for reproof, for correction, for instruction in righteousness.
Yes. It's given for the, yes, the scripture is given for doctrine, correction, reproof, everything, whatever you read, it's given, we have to use the scriptures in a right way, no? We have to, we can use all the other scriptures also from Genesis to Revelation, we can use for doctrine, for reproof, for everything we can use. But we must know which is belong to us. Anything we cannot mix and just make a faloda of it, so we have to know. And Romans, chapter three, verse four says, can you read sister?
Certainly not. Indeed, let God be true, but every man a liar.
Yes. Let God be true, yes, I want to lead that sister. Let God be true and every man be a liar, if I also like, I can be a liar, but God cannot be a liar anytime. Clear? It's clear, no?
Yes. Amen, amen.
Why I prove this, it's because Jesus has not come for us. He says in many scriptures, I will give it now, Romans fifteen eight. Just read sister, Romans fifteen eight.
Now I see that Jesus Christ has become a servant to the circumcision for the truth of God to cut off the promises made to the fathers.
Yes. Jesus Christ was the minister of the circumcision, not for the unsuccestion. And he had come for the circumcision, means for the Israel people, this prove it. And he was the minister of that doctrine. And now this, what they said that Jesus Christ had come for us Gentiles and they mix it and then there also we get confused. Christ has come for us, then why it is he is only speaking to the people of Israel? Romans nine four, chapter nine, verse four.
O Israelites, to whom attain the adoption, the glory, the covenant, the giving of the law, the service of God and the promises.
Yes. See, this prove that Jesus Christ has come only for the circumcision, the Israel people because the promises and the covenant and law, everything was given for them, not for us. That's why Jesus Christ has come only for the Israel people, this scripture also tells us. And Jesus Christ tells by himself saying in Matthew ten, five to six, Matthew ten, five to six.
This twelve, Jesus sent out and commanded them, saying, do not go into the way of the Gentiles and do not enter a city of the Samaritans to the lost ship of the house of Israel.
Yes. See, and our pastors has taught us that we are sheep, goat, everything, but we are, we are not the lost sheep or nothing. We are the body of Christ, we must know. And Jesus Christ tells not to go to the Gentiles, go to the lost ship of Israel, Matthew fifteen twenty-four.
But he answered and said, I was not sent except to the lost ship of the house of Israel.
Yes, here also, the Canaanite woman, no? She came, she comes and tell, beg Jesus to heal her daughter, it's about her. There also Jesus answered her, saying, I have come to give salvation only for the Jew. Okay? Luke nineteen, verse eight, sister. Luke nineteen, verse eight.
Then Japhiah stood and said to the Lord, look, Lord, I gave, I give half of my goods to the poor and if I have taken anything from anyone by false accusation, I restore fourfold.
Yeah, nine also, you did sister.
And Jesus said to him, today salvation has come to this house because he also is a son of Abraham.
Yes. There also he is proving that he has come only for the Israel people. Ten also it is there, till ten, okay?
For the step of man has come to seek and to save that which was lost.
Yeah, we are not lost, we are blessed. So he is telling them and he is the minister of the circumcision. Jesus has come as a minister of the circumcision for the Israel people. And who is our minister now? Our minister is Paul. Paul, God has sent Paul for us and he is our minister and we are following his thirteen letters. So now again, there is one more scripture, Jesus is proving that he is not come for the Gentiles, but he has come for the Israel people in John, chapter four, verse twenty-two. It is about the Samaritan woman.
You worship what you do not know. We know that, we know what we worship for salvation is of the Jews.
Yes. Salvation is also of the Jew and Jesus has come only for the Israel. Is it proof now that he was come only for the Israel people? Now we'll go further. In Luke, chapter thirteen, verse six to nine. Can you read please sister?
He also spoke this terrible. A certain man had a fig tree planted in his vineyard and he came seeking fruit on it and found none. Then he said to the keeper of his vineyard, look, for three years I have come seeking fruit of this fig tree and find none. Cut it down. Why does it, does it use up the ground? But he answered and said to him, sir, let it alone, let it alone this year also, until I dig around it and fertilize it. And if it bears fruit, well, but if not, after that you can cut it down.
Yes, sister. See, this is the story of the fig tree. But this conversation which is going on is between God and Jesus, they are talking to each other. And Jesus is telling God, saying, see, three years I have come here and there is no fig tree. Fig tree means this Israel people. He is telling, God is saying, let it be, I will give them one more year. I will put them soil, fertile, everything, I'll do everything and see if they can repent and change and accept Jesus Christ. And God said, let it be for one year. And this is where the end will come, I will explain that. This conversation, this fig tree story is about God and Jesus, they are talking to each other. And you all know that God, Jesus ministry is only for three years. That's why he is saying, I have come three years over here and looking and there is no fruit on the tree and telling God to just cut it off. But God is saying, no, wait, we will see, we will give one more year. And that is how the one more year was added for the Israel people to see if they can change and repent and convert and know that their sins will, will, can be forgiven and just come in that part, but they never change their mind. It's from Matthew to John and chapter, Acts, chapter seven. One more year period was given for the Israel people. Okay? In order this, Israel people may change and come. After that, Jesus was dead. Jesus was dead. Then Peter preached about repentance and Stephen also in Acts, chapter two, fourteen. I don't want to read that, but if you all want to note it down, note, note it down please. Acts, chapter two, verse fourteen, where the preaching went after Jesus died. But they never preach about the resurrection and the burial, death, resurrection and burial of Jesus Christ. But they, Peter was preaching about repentance and changing your mind and coming to convert yourself and means if you know this, then only you will come to know that your sins are forgiven. But Jesus had, when he died on that cross, that time only past, present, future sins were already forgiven. They never know that because they never understood, when Jesus was telling them, in Luke eighteen also, Jesus was explaining to them, telling them that he will die and he will be buried and he will be risen the third day. They never understood, it is written in Acts, chapter two, verse fourteen, Acts, chapter three, verse nineteen to twenty-one. It's all about preaching, about repentance and all this thing. Acts, chapter four, six to ten, Acts, chapter five, verse thirty to thirty-one, Acts, chapter seven, fifty-one. Where Stephen was preaching and he was stoned to death. That where time pass stop. God has to stop because the Israel people never listen to the, to Jesus also. God sent his only son to the world, they never listen or never accepted Jesus Christ. That very moment, God has to, because that one year period was given, no? In after John, Matthew to John, after death of Jesus Christ from Acts fan to Acts seven, one year period. John two, Acts seven, there was one year period for them, given for the Israel people to change. They never changed, they never converted, they never tried to understand what God was telling them. And there where they fell down. Fell down means on the cross, they never understood the, the value of the cross. And that's what we came to the picture now. And that start in batna for the body of Christ. Ephesians, chapter two, verse thirteen, please read sister.
But now in Christ, Jesus, you who once were far off have been brought near by the blood of Christ.
Yes. There where we came to the picture and Paul was been taught by Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ came from heaven many time to explain to Paul because Paul was also following that same thing because he knows lots of thing, he was well studied, Paul, about all this Bible, everything he knows very well. Then what, he was following the same thing, then that's why Jesus has to reveal himself again and again from heaven, he has to come and meet in visions and tell Paul, strengthen him, give him strength and give this mystery which was hidden. Why it is given, because in Romans, chapter eleven, verse eleven, please read sister.
I say then, have they stumbled that they should fall? Certainly not. But through their fall to provoke them to jealousy, salvation has come to the Gentiles.
Praise the Lord, salvation now has come for us. This is through Paul, amen. Salvation started from us and we must know these things. Not that whatever I said before, that was not important, but because we are the body of Christ, we must know the whole Bible. This whole Bible is given for all of us, we must know, we must study the Bible because in 2 Timothy two fifteen, Paul says, study the Bible, study to shew thyself, a proven to God, a workman that needed not to be ashamed, rightly dividing the word of God. So we have to be proved by God that saying, we have studied what Paul has given and that is only thirteen letters of Jesus Christ, only thirteen letters and the good news started from here. And the, because they fall, they are not fall, ah, now they will continue again. Because this all, what I said in time pass, it's a prophecy and it's the earthly ministry of Jesus Christ. Now again prophecy will come, ages to come is there. I will speak about ages to come, Colossians, chapter one, verse twenty-five to twenty-seven.
Of which I became a minister according to the stewardship from God, which was one given to me for you to fulfill the word of God.
Yeah, just wait sister, pause. See, it's mentioned over there, Paul is a minister. He is teaching us, yes? Okay, continue sister.
The mystery which has been hidden from ages and from generations, but now has been revealed to his saints.
Yes.
God will to make known what are the riches of the glory of this mystery among the Gentiles, which is Christ in you, the hope of glory.
Praise God, praise God. Before it was said in Ephesians, chapter two, verse eleven to twelve, there was no hope for us, there was nothing for us. Now here it says in Colossians, chapter one, twenty-five to twenty-seven, Christ in us is a hope of glory, amen. There is hope for us, every little step of it, there is hope, there is no loss. And we will never lost because Jesus Christ is with us, his word is there. We will fall also, we will stand again and again because there is hope in Christ. That what tells us Paul about batna, started from here and we are living in the dispensation of grace. Hallelujah. We are living in the dispensation of grace. Four thousand years, God did not speak to the Gentile, but God is speaking to us through Paul. Through his thirteen letters, he is speaking to us and telling there is hope in us and that's why we know there is hope. And now I'll go for ages to come. Ephesians, chapter two, verse seven.
That in the ages to come, he might show the exceeding riches of his grace in his kindness towards us in Christ teaches.
Yes.
Amen.
Amen. This is like ages to come means now again the prophecy program will start and that is from Hebrew to Revelation. I'll explain a little bit about this ages to come is because when we were reading the Bible, the whole Bible is for us, that's why we were reading. Everything is for us, no? Sometime what we all do, we just open the pages and there it's curses or something like that. I was reading Revelation, chapter eleven, verse nine. You all can note it down, it's not needed, but just an explanation about it. Because I gave the truth to my household, my family, my husband, my children. And we were, we are reading and explaining, when we read, we explain to each other and then sometime we get shocked, are they? We have done everything like we are walking in the truth, we are thinking, everything is right for us now. This, this verse is telling us that our body will be laid down three and a half days and we will be laid down and nobody will be allowed to bury us in the grave. That was a confusion, okay? Because we don't know this, batna start from this thirteen letters of Paul. Ages to come means now, after rapture, this tribulation will come, that is called ages to come. We are getting confused because this things are like, everything is mess, no? That's why Paul is saying to rightly divide the word of God. And when we rightly divide, this is not belong to us, we'll come to know. Because this dead bodies and for the war, we will never go. We will be with the Lord forever, eternity in heaven. That is, this will be rapture and the tribulation will continue because the people who have not followed Paul's letters, thirteen letters or not believed or that is the commandment God tells us in his thirteen letters, that 1 Corinthians, chapter fourteen, verse thirty-seven. It is the command for each, each and everyone, the body of Christ, to come, obey that thirteen letters. Only follow that thirteen letters, but we must know the whole Bible also, that also I'm telling. But the command is given for us, 1 Corinthians, chapter fourteen, verse thirty-seven. Read sister.
If anyone thinks himself to be a prophet or spiritual, let him acknowledge that the things which I write to you are the commandments of the Lord.
Yes. What Paul is writing is the commandment of the Lord for us to obey it. And 1 Timothy one sixteen says, follow Paul's pattern. 1 Timothy one sixteen.
However, for this reason, I obtain mercy that in me, first Jesus Christ, might show all long suffering as a pattern of to those who are going to believe on him for everlasting life.
Yes. And what we have to believe, what we have to believe and what is there for us to believe, what is his pattern? His pattern is 1 Corinthians, chapter fifteen, verse one to four. And that is his pattern, his death, burial and resurrection. Whoever believes that, that person is saved and he will never face the tribulation and ages to come. And we are, we are in batna, we are living in batna. Past, present, future sins are forgiven, Colossians, chapter one, verse thirteen to fourteen. When we believe, believe that 1 Corinthians, chapter fifteen, verse one to four, past, present, future sins are forgiven, Jesus has purchased us with his blood, Acts twenty, twenty-eight. And he has silled us with his Holy Spirit, Ephesians, chapter one, verse thirteen. That silt cannot be removed by anybody in this world. The devil and nobody that silt is on us, the body of Christ. Praise God and all glory to Jesus Christ, thank you Lord.
Thank you, thank you sister Maria, awesome, awesome, very good.